William Commander?
Here.
Bill Githen?
Here.
Tony Monroe?
Here.
Sally Rettarby?
Here.
Rich West? The Honorable Attorney General of the United States of America. Consider Republic, the righteous saints, one nation under God, in this law with liberty and justice for all. May I have the approval of the minutes from the September 8th regular meeting minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And they also have approval of the August meeting to reports.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, first on the agenda, we are back on the Economic Development Facilitator. I think Jonathan was looking into the possibility of some of the organizations that will be attending this, participating and paying for the contract for Cheryl on more Hugh. And I think CRC was also looking into that, Rich, if I'm not mistaken.
CRC yesterday approved one-third of the consultant cost up to $3,167, I believe, assuming to see other two parties, I think it was eighty-seven.
I think it's sixty.
Was that one of these?
Yeah. It was the third.
Third of the contract.
Yeah.
A third of ninety-five.
And it did not include the commitment from developed culver because it seemed that would probably work toward the venue and or food.
Okay. Any other information on that?
The only other update was that I have sent the information over to the Chamber Board as well, but their next meeting didn't coincide, it's coming up on the 29th. So I offered to be a part of that and answer any questions they have, but hopefully get a vote from them as well at that point.
Okay. I know when we talked about it at the last meeting that Sally wasn't at, we talked about having one larger facilitated workshop with potentially follow-up and that sort of thing. But we've also discussed the idea of having smaller meetings with some of these organizations and then coming together at the end for one facilitated meeting, potentially leading to writing an actual plan. And I know I've talked to some of you one-on-one, haven't had a chance to get to all of you yet, but that seems to be a strategy and it's closer to what was outlined in the contract. So rather than go back to her and say, hey, can we do it this way? We're thinking maybe just stick with it how it is. At this point, we know a third of that contract would be covered by CRC. How is the council feeling about approving it in full at this point? And then seeing if we can't get contributions so we can at least get back to Cheryl and try to get something scheduled for this. Where are you guys at?
I'd be okay with that.
I'm just afraid that, you know, the others won't kick in and I think they need to be a part of it. That's my comment.
I would make the motion that we adopt the same resolution that CRC did, which is that the council agree to pay one-third of the cost up to $3,167, assuming that there are three major sponsors of the event.
Anyone else?
Are there just going to be three sponsors of it or what about?
Three major sponsors, right.
Okay, what about BZA and?
Well, Plan Commission and BZA are really part of the town zoning. They don't have a budget, so I consider them part of the town and part of economic development in terms of they do zoning.
Yeah, they're definitely part of economic development.
Right. But I don't think we can expect them to kick in.
No.
They'd have to do it out of their own pockets.
Right.
So it would be really Chamber and developed culver if we were to see anything else.
Okay. I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So let's, before we go back to her, I'd like to give Jonathan more time to see if we are going to get another contribution to that. If not, we'll have to look at the scope of the contract and rethink it or come back to council. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, next we have six-time Peru Court landscaping and the right-of-way request. I believe that Tony came up first last time and?
I have an update on that.
Okay.
I have talked to the neighbors and so have the property owners that were here last time, and they'd like a little more time to just try to work things out between themselves. They may be revising what they had requested, so can we cancel that for tonight?
Sure.
Put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Yes. I assume council's okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, let's go on to first reading of ordinance 2020-006, which is a golf cart regulation. I'm going to recommend that we do this one in three separate reads because it involves quite a number of changes and to give the public plenty of time to check it out. But anyway, I wanted to basically read the parts of this ordinance that would be changing. And Jonathan has nicely done that in the draft in the red font. So he also separated out this year the golf cart ordinance separate from the horse-drawn carriages or what do we call them?
Animal-drawn vehicles.
Animal-drawn vehicles, I suppose it doesn't necessarily have to be a horse. Because as we were discussing this in the task, meaning there are a few things that are slightly different between the two, right? So the first change is in section two, which is operating a golf cart on any street alley or road within the limits of the town of Culver. A driver of such a golf cart must be at least sixteen years of age and 180 days of age and hold either an identification card issued under Indiana Code 92416 or a photo exempt identification card issued under Indiana Code 92416.5. So sixteen and a half years old or older. The next paragraph is also a change. Wayne has added, or the task force, I should say, has recommended adding, Indiana code restricting the use of telecommunications devices while operating a moving motor vehicle shall apply to the operation of a golf cart and will be subject to the same restrictions as under Indiana Code 921859. So that's a new law in Indiana with vehicles. And our task force thought that that should apply to golf carts as well. So if Amber were on a golf cart right now, she'd be in violation. Section three, there's been, I'll read this whole paragraph because there's slight tweaks to it. All golf carts must have insurance for use on public streets, on said golf cart and have proof of such insurance in the golf cart at all times during the operation of golf carts in the town of Culver and must be provided to town staff during registration. This has been quite an issue, I think, up at Town Hall with us getting proof of insurance and often Julie Cowal ends up making a lot of phone calls. But it's also required that this be on the vehicle at all times. Section four, Indiana code requires that all slow-moving vehicles, including golf carts, must display a red or amber flashing light at times when headlights are necessary for other motor vehicles. That was just clarifying language, I think. We added just a phrase there that Wayne wanted it to be a little more clear.
Did you say flashing light? They don't have flashing light.
Some that don't have light, people put stuff on, that's the way the statute reads. But that gives them more clarification.
But I'm saying if you've got headlights and taillights, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not according to the way this is written, it says it needs a flashing light, that's why I said.
That is the way it's written, that's the way the state code reads. The state code doesn't mention headlights or taillights was kind of the issue that we faced. So we can work on.
The tax section is.
It's always the man, it's just being clarified.
So to have a golf cart ordinance, the state says you have to follow their rules, golf carts and slow-moving vehicles. And one of the things they have in there is the flashing amber light.
Okay, well then everybody driving down the street at night is going to be in violation of state law. Is that what you're saying?
That's my interpretation of it, yes, that's. Not that, I don't know that that's going to be, you know, a major concern for us. We just wanted the language to be consistent. If there's a way to reword that, Jim and I can work on that or Wayne too, but that is literally just the state code.
I understand, but you don't want everybody driving down the street to be in violation of the law.
It's a state law, whether it's our ordinance or not, they're violation of the state law.
Whether we put it in there or not.
I understand, well, maybe Jim can explain a little better. Because you've got to be careful. You can't change, make ordinance that's super, that undersees what state law is by statute. You can make something more, but you can't make it less, am I right?
One.
I was going to say, why can't you have or headlights and taillights?
Well, there is a headlight, taillight on that section. Basically, it says, "In addition, said golf cart must be equipped with both headlights and taillights that are in working order if operated at times when headlights are necessary for other vehicles. In addition, golf carts must be equipped with a rearview mirror that is operational."
Yeah, twelve parts, same.
So again, I think the issue is that the state code doesn't address headlights or taillights at all. It only says that slow-moving vehicles have to have that red amber flashing light. If there's a way that we can do that, I would look back at it and Jim and I and Wayne can all try, but honestly, that was our impression, reading it was that the state requirement is that. I don't think it's something, again, we feel like if you have the headlight and taillight, we're fine with that locally, but that's what just.
Just so you understand, there could be a situation where we've got a part-timer working. You stop me because I don't have a flashing light?
Right.
And I'm in violation? Okay, now, I guess if I come to the council and you don't find me, I don't know. I hate to be in violation when I'm riding down.
What if you have an accident and the state code says that that's what you're supposed to have? You don't have, I mean, I think it's redundant to have a law every year. I think if we're out in the world, the state law says.
Okay.
We'll take it up.
We don't have a golf cart.
We'll take it up to our state rep.
So everybody's going to have to get one of these, is that what we're saying? Is that what you're saying? We have to get some kind of flashing light?
Why not? We're not after people that don't have.
We'll take up the language with our state rep too, because that ought to be changed in statute.
Add to the existing statute to enhance it, but we can't take away from the statute. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we cannot make less of the state statute.
That's correct.
So, so guys, rather than us debate it tonight, we'll take it up with our state rep.
Yeah, we enhance it.
Nothing we can do about it.
Enhance it by putting the headlight taillight in, so it's better for you.
Okay, as long as everybody understands that if you.
We get it.
You don't need to.
We get it.
I got it.
We're moving on. Okay, next change is in section seven, this is for the registration fee. Currently, the change is at a hundred dollars. This is something up for debate tonight, I know we talked about it in an earlier meeting. So before we pass this first read, I want to get council input on that. And the registration sticker must remain visible at all times during operation of the vehicle. It's been something that has been a concern, where people aren't putting the sticker on. So that was also added to that paragraph.
Well, I don't know if it's not the fact the sticker's on, the fact that it's hidden underneath the seat.
Yeah.
I mean, it's on and you just can't read it when you've got people sitting in the backseat.
And Wayne wants it visible on the vehicle.
That's why I asked to have the rearmost portion of the golf cart. You know, some people, you've got to be a little creative. Come on, if you want to drive these things, make a plate and put it on there. Simple as that.
Does the provision for the state ID proving somebody who's over sixteen, is a driver's license acceptable on that?
Yes.
That's included in the section on this part of the.
Yeah.
All right, I didn't know.
It can be either of those types of IDs.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure it was in that section that we quoted, I think.
Okay, there's another change in this section, I'm going to read this whole paragraph. While in operation, such golf carts must carry no more passengers than the golf carts are equipped to handle and all passengers must be seated at all times. Children under three years old are not to be passengers on golf carts on public streets, alleys or roads in the town of Culver. Under no circumstances should a child under the age of sixteen years and 180 days old be allowed to operate a golf cart in the town of Culver. And adult passengers or drivers are not to hold children on their lap while the vehicle is in operation.
I have a comment, I think that's as far as enforcement's concerned. Rather than three years, because then we're going to require birth certificates in golf carts. When you go to, American Academy of Pediatrics says a three-year-old should be thirty-six inches. So I'm suggesting that we go by the height standard, like you do in amusement parks and other places, than rather than the three years.
Okay, hold that thought until we get to end and we'll go over the changes. Last change is anyone violating any of the provisions of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of a hundred and fifty dollars per violation. If a person has cited for violation of this ordinance more than three times, the registration shall be revoked and said golf cart shall no longer be allowed to operate in the limits of the town of Culver. That final change is that dollar amount for the fine. I believe before was that a hundred, Wayne?
Oh, it was three different.
Yeah, we had three different levels, right? If you violated it once, it was a hundred, if it was twice, it was like two hundred and.
Yeah, it makes it too confusing.
We just did one flat fee.
If you're increasing the registration and you're increasing the fines, you probably need to conduct a public hearing on the ordinance. I assume you're planning on doing that?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so that covers the golf cart changes. Horse-drawn vehicles pretty much match up, it's just the language isn't as long with the horse-drawn vehicles or animal-drawn vehicles, I should say. The fine is the same, the age is the same, the hundred-dollar registration is the same.
I think the only difference was that amber flashing light, that there's no provision for requirements for a headlight or taillight for those. That was the main difference.
All right, so let's go back to discussion of the changes. The registration fee, a hundred dollars, discussion. Hold on one second to you, any comments, thoughts, too high, too low, just right?
Well, my comment is, as I said to Wayne earlier today, that the price of these golf carts today, being what they are, if you went to Plymouth and bought an old beater for five thousand dollars to get around and you had to put a license plate on, you're probably all over the hundred bucks. So, you know, like, not all golf carts are ten thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars, but I think since we've had forty dollars for a period of time, I think a hundred's reasonable.
Any other comments, Rich?
I wonder if we should make a provision for bulk purchases. So it's not to punish businesses, maybe doing that or something like, you've got over twenty-four units that you're registering under one name that there'd be a discount rate on.
Okay, Bill, Sally, any input?
I'm fine with that fee.
I'm fine with a hundred, the only thing, like I brought up last time was, you know, we get money from MVH for gasoline tax. And the only thing I would offer is, you know, two, one fee for electric carts and one fee for gas carts, and the gas cart could be less. I'm not that adamant on it, but I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay. I know this was like, we heavily discussed it during budget time, I think it was, when this topic came up. I, I think we ought to just go up an increment, maybe not quite to a hundred, I think it's a little bit high. I know that in terms of, we take in cash for this all the time at the window. So it's forty was easy to do because it's two twenties and a lot of people actually come without payment and then they run to an ATM and bring it back to Julie. So as Karen said in one of our meetings, it's got to be an increment of twenty or ten to make it easier on the front desk. So from that standpoint, I was thinking more like sixty or eighty. Seemed more of a reasonable jump than a hundred, but I'm also not married to that. I just throw it out there as a thought, because I think we're going to get some kickback on this when we do do a public hearing. So the one-fifty fine, I was comfortable with that fine because we have so many people violating the rules of golf carts and maybe a hefty fee will help mitigate some of that. Wayne?
Just for the audience's purpose, people need to understand we have four hundred and eighty-seven of these. Just about a handful.
Right, right.
A lot of them, out of all you're, all some of them, so.
Yeah, and for the people online who are listening, Wayne pointed out that there are four hundred and eighty-seven golf carts now in the streets. So, and I saw Russ's hand go up and I think someone else is so, even though this isn't a public hearing, well, I think it's fair to allow the people in the room to make a comment, Russ?
I would like to remind the council that a fee is not a tax. A fee has to represent some cost that you have, some consideration. We have a, we have a fee on our utility bill for administering the trash pickup. We have a fee on our utility bill for the hydrants. Those represent costs that we have. The forty dollars represents what it costs to administer the program. When I was building commissioner, I wanted to raise the building fees. And I had to prove, I'll say to the council if you remember, I had to prove that there was an actual cost associated with that fee I was asking for. The number of inspections that had to be made for foundation and so forth. So you can't just arbitrarily have some kind of a fee. You have to have some justification for why you're doing it. And it certainly doesn't take a hundred dollars to administer one golf cart, it just doesn't.
Okay, thank you, Russ. Did I see someone else's hand? I don't know if it was Gary or in the background.
That was pretty much my question, is that way we raised it like sixty percent in 2016 and now if we're going to raise it again, that's like a three-hundred percent increase from 2016. My question is kind of like Russ's, what's the justification for raising that amount? I know inflation sure is, that hasn't been that little of a last year.
Yeah, I think administratively it has been difficult for us because there's so many people coming in and many of them are not coming in prepared and we end up tracking down information for those folks. And for me, I think also we've been putting in a lot of bike pedestrian trails. A lot of people think it's okay to ride the golf carts on those when we clearly not allowed that. And we need some sort of maintenance fund for those trails and we're hoping to put in even more. I look at part of this fee as going directly toward maintenance. I suggested that during budget time that we allocate part of the money we're collecting for that purpose. But, you know, that's just my own opinion and I think a hundred is high. But I'll let council members also jump in if there's thoughts on that. I know Bill explained a lot on the license plate. Anyone else? Or Wayne?
I think we do have one online, oh.
Go ahead.
One online.
Here you raised.
I see it.
Here you raised this, I think there's a bunch of. My concern was that this fee is an increase of a hundred and fifty percent. And that is a big change for anything. Whether or not a hundred dollars is justified, and you do the math, you've got about fifty thousand dollars to work with. Is there a specific fund that this is going to? I know you're trying to outline it, but is there a specified fund for this money or does it just go into a general rainy day thing? How do you allocate these amounts?
Right now, I think Karen keeps it separate, but it ultimately is general fund money. So you transfer it into general fund and you can use it. It's not like water sewer where you're restricted with how you can use the dollars.
And from a financial point of view, it's not a whole lot. You're not a hundred, it is a lot of percentage anyway.
Yeah.
So I think you're going to have people wanting justification for that larger increase. And another comment I have, if you have a driver's license at age sixteen, what is the sixteen and a half? I don't understand.
It's statute.
Is that in Indiana only or?
Indiana statute.
So you have valid driver's license at sixteen from Hawaii, you can't drive it into Indiana, no?
You have a valid driver's license in or in Indiana on our state-issued identification card for sixteen, or the statute reads sixteen and a half. I mean, we want people to be able to identify themselves. So that's how they have to be able to identify by having that. That's really the primary justification behind them. You stop kids, you have nobody know how old they are. Now we got a lot of extra work, Russ. We'll have to try to find that, you know, so they can present it.
Yeah, it has been taxing on police officers in many ways because there's so many of them now, and, I mean, we all have seen eight and ten-year-olds driving golf carts down the street. Every time we have to stop one of those, we're not doing our job somewhere else in town. So administratively, it's become a headache on the police, on the town hall department. And frankly, for me, we are doing a lot of quality of life projects like trails that are going to need maintenance and we have to have funds to do all of that sort of work. And you take it from the general fund, you can't use utility funds or sewer funds or that sort of thing. So to me, it makes sense to figure out what we do with the dollars that aren't going toward administratively. But I'm only justifying my own thoughts. Anything else from council before, did you say there was someone online? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Rod and Jessica Ringer from Ringer's Golf Carts. A couple of things we would just like to add if we could real quick. I do agree with Russ Mason on the fact that it'd be a little easier to accept the high fee if we could see some money actually going towards something that actually involves golf carts. I don't know, an access road beside State Road seventeen, so people aren't on the highway or.
Number ten.
I'm sorry, number ten, I'm sorry. Or, you know, I do understand it's a lot more work for our police and in the town. We try very hard and require people to read and sign paperwork before they can rent a cart from us. So I understand that aspect of it. This is a large cost for us as a business. I understand that there is a little bit of talk about possible discount, but it doesn't just, it doesn't just hurt us in that sense. People coming in to purchase, it can be a real hardship on them. We have a lot of people who come and purchase from us or we work on their carts and they really need these carts for their lifestyle. We have people who can't walk well. We have people who can only drive golf carts for one reason or another. So I understand that there is the walking trails and the biking trails, but I think that fund really should be coming from somewhere else and not from people who are using golf carts. I'm a little hesitant on the age requirement too. I sit at that desk and I just see bicycles just fly through that intersection from the blind side where we're located and how many cars have, you know, it's, they're, you know, not stopping there at all, they have small children on the back in their little seats that they're in. So I don't know, I'm just a little hesitant to say that the three is the right age when younger children are allowed to ride on the back of bicycles or in one of the little carriers behind bicycles in town with cars driving all around them as well. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Anything else from council? Do you all want to do first read or do you want to wait? Do you all want to do first read or do you want to wait, digest the changes, then get through and wait for a public hearing on the rates? What do you, what do you guys want to do next?
I would suggest we either get clarification or work on the amber light issue, um, to get that wording. I mean, I understand that's what the state said, to, if we can get some clarification. I mean, I, it seems redundant to me and if there's a way that we, in Whitey more than this, that we don't have to include that, I would prefer to wait and get that done.
Anything else?
Personally, I don't have problems we lowered the, the fee from a hundred to, like you say, eighty or, or less. And it seems like a lot of a jump, but, uh, I don't have a problem either way.
Do you guys want to go ahead and conduct a public hearing and then do first read? And then we can get input on all the changes and the rates? I think we've had good input tonight, but out of fairness to the rest of the community and businesses, maybe you could schedule a public hearing and then do first read. Does that sound good?
Make some changes and bring it back for a public hearing and first read.
Yeah, I mean, we can do for, we could do a public hearing out of how it works right now, unless you do want to make a change right now for the public hearing. That's fine too. I'm just saying, let's schedule a public hearing and get this type of input from across the community and then do first read.
I agree, you know, it's towards the end of the season, I mean, we've got some time, so I'd say, you know, work on the changes and bring it back as much in the final state as you can before you do the public hearing.
Okay, so let's talk about what those changes are. Rich wants to look at the amber light issue. Sally's suggesting we go ahead and lower the hundred dollar fee. Uh, what other changes do you want to look at?
Bill says raise the, raise it to three feet.
The thirty-six inch height. Um, so make that change. A sixty dollar fee? Eighty dollar fee?
I was five years old before I did three feet.
Right there with you, Sally. I was probably eight.
I, I would compromise on the hundred, but I, I would say this, that we, where we don't want to go is a, uh, a situation where we have a fee that this golf cart is this much money and that golf cart is that much money. Um, from observations, I mean, just living here in town, I find in the sense of the word of a golf cart, we have very few golf carts. We've got a lot of resort, uh, limos and, uh, I call them resort limos and, you know, six passenger or eight passengers and things like this. And I think that, uh, you know, certainly those, paying the cost of those, I think eighty, in my opinion, is reasonable.
Any other feedback on that?
I'd agree with you.
Okay, so we'll make that change. We'll look at the amber light issue and, um, the thirty-six inch one. We'll put that draft out to the public and do, schedule a public hearing. Do we need thirty days for that, I think?
We just have to advertise it.
Just for next?
Ten days ahead.
If we get it in paper tomorrow, it'll be in October. It's either going to be October thirteenth or it'll be October.
Okay. Whichever one you two decide, that's fine. We'll do an October public hearing, then we'll do first read, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, great. Um, and thanks for all of you who had input and feedback already.
Is that just on the golf cart or are you doing the animal draw too?
Yeah, I think whatever changes we do on golf cart, we might as well do on animal drawn. Yeah, we'll do both. I guess technically Karen, we should advertise both ordinances because they're separate as they're written now. And do the public hearing on both. So I'm going to skip over that next agenda, which is the animal drawn and go on to a public hearing for twenty twenty-one budget.
If I may, um, I feel like it's going to give us a trust for most of the day in that, um, there are a couple of things that need to fall into place before I ask for the public hearing. Um, because we found a couple of opportunities or one opportunity to purchase a backhoe at a significantly less price this year. Then if we were to wait until next year and Bob's got those quotes, I believe he, I think he provided those, I'm not sure.
No, sorry, I have them here on paper, but I didn't.
Okay. And that purchase would take place this calendar year?
If we can do that purchase this calendar year, we'll have to do additional appropriation, but we have to do additional appropriation for a bunch of other things anyway. So if we do that purchase this year, it saves us, we budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand for a backhoe for next year. Um, and we would be able to reduce the NVH budget by fifty thousand, the street budget by, and the street budget by fifty thousand.
So, as Karen was saying, we had originally, uh, we originally talked about, uh, having the backhoe in the budget for next year. Bob had been test driving a few of them and did find one that he likes. Um, see the brand number or brand?
Caterpillar.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Uh, a caterpillar and we had looked at budget wise, I think we were looking at a hundred and
It was a hundred and sixty.
Sixty is what we had thrown out as kind of a budget number for next year. Um, after test driving three of them and, um, getting a trade-in value on the existing, uh, two thousand four John Deere, the quote is eighty-four thousand five twenty-six if we use, um, Sourcewell, which is one of those purchasing agencies or co-ops like we use for the fire truck. And I, I think Bob was real happy with that and, um, if we're going to do an additional appropriation at the end of the year, this year anyway, um, we could move forward with it now, you know, two months ahead of time. And, you know, go ahead and get it, just like everything with, uh, I think, when they switched to the new model year, I think in one of the emails Bob forwarded me, they only had a few left of the current model year before it'll go up, you know, by a few percent, not a huge amount, but, um, we were planning on getting it, we're ready for it. Uh, we liked the, the price that we got on this one and I think Bob would like to move forward with it. I see he's on the call. Uh, Bob, did you unmute? Is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, the, one, one additional comment is with the existing or this year's model, it is on the, on the ground in South Bend. We don't have to wait for the factory to produce one and with the COVID stuff going on, I was told it could take up to nine months to build the one we want if we wait for next year's model.
Okay, so obviously doing this appropriation and taking it off of next year's budget changes your budget and the public hearing, et cetera. Okay. So, um, input from the council? You okay with doing a backhoe this year as an appropriation? Um, sounds like Bob and Jonathan and Karen have done some due diligence on this. Is there a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I talked to Bob the other day and understood this and it's, uh, I'll make the motion if we go ahead and purchase it this year.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Karen, do you want to hold off on the public hearing till, do you want to continue? Okay.
Hold on, I got a couple more things, but we have to have a public hearing tonight.
Okay.
Actually, I, I kind of prepared, that's partly why I've been checking all day because I've been comparing.
Got one version of it.
Yeah, exactly. Depending on how this goes and this goes. So, um, the second thing that I need to do before the public hearing is just to give you a heads up. Um, I shared with you last week that we are going to have to do an additional appropriation. We've known that all year since March when we did the COVID small business relief, so, um, but I think I've got the numbers nailed down. So I've got a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for the COVID small business relief. Um, our stellar projects, the beach lodge, cattle park were pretty much wrapped up. Um, and we had money budgeted in two thousand eighteen and nineteen that we didn't use all of. Um, we budgeted each year twenty, forty thousand dollars in eighteen and nineteen. Um, and we had money left over and then next we budgeted, we were planning on budgeting fifty thousand dollars next year, budgeted fifty thousand this year. We're not going to need it, need the fifty thousand next year, we need it this year. So I need to, um, do an additional appropriation for eighty-five thousand dollars for the, for the, the two, um, open seller projects. And again, that's money that was, it was budgeted, it just not, it was just unspent, so we need that permission to actually spend it. Um, and then we are all knew that EMS was going to be over budgeted just for personnel and, um, hiring of the directors and benefits. So twenty-five thousand dollars for the, uh, EMS. And then we just approved the twenty-five thousand dollars for street and twenty-five for NVH and then the rest will come from Walgreens Sewer.
For the backup?
Yeah, and those two funds don't, don't have to do the whole appropriations process, so we'll move that out. Um, and then finally, a last, last thing that I, um, realized with the fire truck, um, we have, uh, a group that was donating a hundred thousand dollars over the course of five years. And they paid two of those years, we have three years left. Um, the last two years, I've placed that money into the fire non-rewarding fund or non-reward gift fund because I wanted to keep that separate from the general fund. It, it only was going for the, for the, uh, the fire truck. Now that we've paid for the fire truck, which we'll get an update on that, um, there's sixty thousand dollars left. If I take that from the non, the fire non-rewarding fund, that's going to put that fund in the negative. And state board of accounts doesn't really look on that positively. I got a ruling from them, I, I asked them what they would prefer I do. You know, we've got a group with that benefactor, um, but they said, you know, it'd probably be better if we just did an appropriate, additional appropriation to the general fund. And then going forward, you know, put that money, you replenish the general fund or, you know, switch it around, you can do some maneuvers, but I'm going to keep it simple. So, um, we do need to do sixty thousand dollars for the fire truck and then that will be replenished twenty thousand dollars over the next three years. So, um, the total is three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, which is not, you know, anything to sneeze at. Uh, but most of this is stuff that we've already discussed, we committed to, um, so I just want to give you a heads up that that's where we're at. Are you all okay with that?
Yeah, so this the stellar was just, was actually sitting there from previous years where we had budgeted in there, but we're just now spending it three years later, okay?
So, to make things easier to look at, we kind of budgeted over a couple of years so that it would be there when we needed it. So if you're okay with that, that's probably the bad news, but it has some good news. So, um, again, I'm able to, we, when we originally presented the budget, we had put fifty thousand dollars extra in the street budget and fifty thousand dollars in the NVH budget for, specifically for the purchase of a backhoe. We're doing that net this year without additional appropriation. So we can, we can reduce next year's budget for both the street fund, street and the NVH. As well as reducing the clerk's budget by fifty thousand dollars because all of that stellar money is needed this year. So I guess that's not a reducing, it's just a switching of years. Um, and then the CCD funds, we put, uh, a total of seventy thousand dollars in there that didn't need to be there. So the CCD fund is reduced by seventy thousand as well. So that's some of the good news. The other good news is, um, I received the, an updated estimate of the local income tax collections, um, back in, I think it was August, late July, early August. Uh, Department of Local Government Finance came out with an estimate of, I think it was three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And at that time, they were just kind of going off of what they knew of up to that point. Um, the governor and one of his executive orders extended the date, um, into later August when they had to certify those numbers. And because they were able to wait for a while, the, I think the implement numbers have, have improved. And so their estimates improved. So it went up to five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Which took us from between the budget reductions, um, and the increase in the, in the lit, has actually put us in luck for the budget next year. So all of the, you know, it's not over till fat listings and she hasn't sung yet, but we're getting closer. So.
So you're telling, so you're telling me we're in the black.
I'm telling you we're in the black, so.
So underestimating revenue.
Well, I do.
Then finding out revenue turned out okay.
Exactly, yeah, so.
Sort of a blessing, lucky.
Yeah.
Well, I tell you, the, the, we had the library got extra income tax money too, you know, and all, all the municipalities.
I've checked with other clerk treasures.
Everybody got more money.
Yeah, so I think the jobs, you know, kind of are coming back, so that's an improvement. So.
Okay.
Okay, so now onto the real, you know, um, item for this evening is the proposed twenty twenty-one budgets. So I did, I
Do we need to open a public hearing first, like motion to open it?
I can just review this and then open it up, that's fine.
Let's open up the, I'm, I'm going to reopen up the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, I, thank you for allowing me to get the other stuff out of the way.
Sally seconded, okay? All in favor to open the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now go into that.
Thank you for introducing me.
You're welcome.
So yes, and thank you, Bill.
I actually wrote the word Tetris down, I'm going to steal that line.
Um, so Jonathan has the, uh, the income and the expenses up on the screen for those viewing from home. And then there are some out in the audience. Um, basically, we're between property taxes, county income tax, other taxes, other fees. Um, and eliminating the, uh, deducting the circuit breaker tax, we're looking at an income of about two million one hundred eighty-four thousand one thirty-eight um, for the general fund. And then, um, for each of the budgets, there are five budgets that come out of the general fund. The clerk budget, we're looking at four hundred and seventy thousand twenty-five. The police, we're looking at five hundred and sixty thousand six twenty-five. Fire is two twenty-two seven forty-three. EMS, five hundred ninety-four thousand three eighty-four. And the street department, three hundred twenty-one thousand twenty-five. So that puts us at a difference of about, um, ahead of about eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Are there any questions about any of those?
Any questions from council or the public?
What are those five funds doing most, the expense?
It totals, uh, two million one hundred seventy-five seven ninety-eight. And if you want, in the packet behind my close report, this page, it should say at the top, proposed twenty twenty budgets, nine twenty-two, twenty twenty. It's probably the third page. Yes, Russ?
So the numbers that you just quoted are the revised ones based on the changes you gave.
Yes.
With the backhoe, et cetera.
Everything's taken that out. Any other questions?
I had one question Karen, just on the, the seventy thousand CCD for Star.
Mm-hmm.
I was thinking that some of that was earmarked for, um, the park project that was awarded in the county stellar.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, so I guess, and I don't remember the exact amount now, I'd have to go back and, I don't think it was that high, but we may have.
I thought we were at an eighty thousand match on the regional park project.
Right, and we wouldn't anticipate constructing it next year, so we wouldn't be.
Oh, it's like twenty a year is what we were thinking, right?
Or maybe half of it or something like that.
Well, that, that doesn't do anything but make the numbers look even better.
No, it, it would have that, part of it.
Part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I just had it under, I had, um, things like the cattle and park. And then we put money in the general funds or in the clerk's budget and about twenty-five thousand dollars I think for the regional stellar.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I
Does that?
If it's in there somewhere, that's fine, that's fine for next year.
You did have regional stellar in the clerk's budget.
Yeah, and it's just under, it's under stellar and it's in the personal services.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
She's sort of like
Sorry.
Yeah, I remember you had it in the clerk's budget now. It, that kind of rings a bell.
So, um, if there are any other questions, moving on to the park, uh, we've got, we're estimating revenue of two hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy and with expenses, um, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight fifty. Um, and we're adding, we've added on a couple of capital projects. So that's why that's a bit over. The NVH, we're looking at income of about forty-four thousand six point seven. Um, and we're looking at spending sixty-eight thousand six fifty and that's all, all for paving. Um, and that fund actually has a healthy balance right now. Um, local roads and streets, we're anticipating receiving thirteen thousand eight six dollars and we look to spend thirteen thousand again, all for paving. Uh, the CCD, looking at about eight, eighty-seven thousand seven twenty-one in income. And we've got seventy-seven thousand dollars for expenses. And we've got $77,000 for expenses. And then Riverboat, we have $3,500 for income. And looking at $9,334 for expenses. And then the grants, we put it at 1.2 million, and expenses at 1.2 million. Again, that's just a pass through, all of that's just reimbursed, we spend it and then reimbursed by the state for the, with the end dot projects, that type of thing. Any questions on that? Any of those?
If not, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Yeah, let's make sure no one online was a question or comment. Anyone online question or comment on the public hearing for the budget? Anyone else in the room?
I don't know about you, but I'm kind of impressed you did all this on the fly.
Again, it was like the Tetris today.
She had two versions of this thing ready to go.
Yeah, it was no clerk's report.
There you go.
I'm glad you got it back in the black.
I am too, I, I don't fall off my chair on Friday, so.
Bill's going to have a party for you.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
Bill, I know, I think you motioned to close the public hearing?
I did.
Okay, is there second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing closed. Thank you, Karen. Thanks for all your work on that. You know, because Bob threw that big backhoe loop. We'll blame him for all that work, but we still like you, Bob.
Well, I'll take a savings, you know.
Yeah, you helped out the budget, Bob, and got us back in the black, so.
Yeah.
Buy more backhoes in the future. Karen disagrees. All right, so now we need to do a first read of ordinance 2020-009, the 2021 annual budget. That motion to pass the budget on first read.
So move it, second.
All in favor? We're 5-0 on that, but we need to wait to the next meeting, right, Karen?
Correct.
Okay. All right, regional stellar plan update. I don't have any new news on the regional stellar plan update, do you?
Just that we received two proposals for professional services for the Jeffersons' site and cast street trails. And Karen, Bob and I went over those today and are working on our score sheets. That's about it.
All right, stellar plan update for the town.
And I'm sorry, in my report, I put the time wrong. The ribbon cutting at Capitol Park is 3:30 PM on Friday. And with Okra and the schools and hopefully all the council members there. And then we'll be at the Beach Lodge following that at 4:30 PM, same day, Friday, September 25th, this Friday. Both will be open to the public and will follow health department guidelines. And so right of way acquisition for the trail project on South Main Street has been staked. So I let those property owners know that that's what those stakes are for. It's subcontracted through another company that actually contacts them and makes the offer and does all that part. But we at least let them know that's what the stakes are for and that they'll be hearing from the company soon. I think that's all I have for the.
All right, we'll go on to town managers' report.
Um, I, I mentioned this at the last meeting, just like an okay to, a motion to approve participating in the, the MACOG electric vehicle charging station grant. Which for us, we're anticipating next year we'd have a local match around $4,000. If awarded.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Cover Bob's backhoe. First, a couple utility things, a thank you to Bob and all of the residents on Davis and Main Streets as they've been patient as this construction project got started. And, you know, the roads turned into quite the mess down there. But, you know, when it's all done, I think we'll be happy with, with the improved stormwater service there and new street and replacement of any damaged sidewalks. So thank you everyone for being patient, thank you Bob for being down there and keeping an eye on things for us. We do anticipate partial closure, closure of Main Street in the next week or so. And we'll put out a notice once that's official, not sure what date it will be. And we'll have to reroute traffic around there for a short period of time.
It has, it has slowed down, it has slowed down the golf cart traffic on the street, I can just tell you that.
Good to hear. Request from Bob then to add two seasonal employees for lead crews, so I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
So move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Bob also has a proposal for us from EJP, and that's for software support for our water and sewer billing. The plan we're recommending is the enhanced EJP support plan. And there's two options, we can renew at $3,600 per year or a one-time lump sum of $10,000 for a four-year plan. So the, divided out of the four, where the cost is a little lower, but you have to pay for it upfront. I don't really have a preference, I don't, Karen does, I like the cost savings, but like I said, it's a little more.
What's just come out of water and sewer?
Correct, yeah.
I make a motion that we go ahead and pay the $10,000 upfront, save some money.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I circulated a list of potential paving projects for a fall round of community crossing matching grants within that. Few of us actually expected would, would happen, so that's good news. I sent the list to council, we'll get budget estimates from EMB paving that are part of the required submission. And we may shave it down a little bit, once we figure out, you know, when the numbers come back, knowing what we have budgeted next year is a possible match. So yeah, the, the list I gave you was probably a little longer than what we may actually be able to do. If you have any questions on that, let me know. And then we have a trail easement from Sand Hill Farms that Kevin Berger's provided. Jim's reviewed it and I've reviewed it and we think it meets our requirements. So I would ask for a motion to accept that easement for Sand Hill Farm.
Hmm, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Amber had an item about possibly doing the Moonlight Paddle on October 9th as a park program instead of, since there's no Fall Fest this year, the group is still interested in holding it. Basically, the only difference would be we would allow it under our insurance rather than theirs. And we would help promote it as a park event.
Is that why they just get on their individual paddle boards and go out?
Basically, they meet here for launch.
Paddle out, okay. So you need an approval for it?
Yeah, if I could get approval for that as a project, that would be, that'd be great.
Sorry, allergies. Motion to approve the paddleboard event for the October 9th, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I have a special event permit request from Knights of Columbus. It's for Saturday morning street collection fundraiser, and it would be October 3rd. So I ask for a motion to approve that special event request.
So move it, third.
Second by Sally, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that's all I have, thank you.
Halloween.
Oh, that was great.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see it on the agenda. I, I see there's more information kind of coming out, but we have had a couple people ask. You know, we've always set it on the date of Halloween from 5 to 7. Getting that looked from Wayne. But we had a, a few people ask, and I guess my response so far has been, that's the time that we've always set. However, you know, we're also, if state or county guidelines prohibit traditional activities, we would think, of course, enforce that and go along with that. But I guess if we need to be sharing other information, you know, if people, please let us know.
I haven't seen any towns cancel it as of now, but.
Clerk treasures were out of that, or either just on the list, or most towns are still competing with it. I think it's a really easy holiday to socialize. I think it's already moving that.
Yeah, and it wasn't on the agenda at one point, but it's not on there, right? So I just, yeah, yeah. I think Karen and I had both had, some people asked whether or not it was going to move forward. And I think we had actually already, according to Wayne, we'd actually already set the date and time, right? So I, so that's, I guess, our approach at this point is just, you know, so long as it's allowed under state and county guidelines, then we would do the same.
Do you want a motion to approve that, or?
That'd be fine.
I, I'm good with just going as we normally do, but if you want it to feel like it's been authorized by the council, we could certainly vote on it.
I think we just wait to see what happens with COVID and what the.
If the county and the state changes something?
We could, we could wait, you know, a meeting or two.
Status quo for now.
Yeah.
You voted on it in 2000.
Oh, the date and time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No reminder.
I wasn't here for that one, Russ.
Never changed since then.
Yeah, we've always had it on Halloween 5 to 7.
Right, as long as I put my two cents in. I do know there's several of us seniors are not going to participate in the trick or treating because of the kids, and it just doesn't, it's just not worth it to.
One of the things we made a lot of communication about it then is, have, there'll be signs of 2000.
Well, our lights will be off.
We're supposed to keep your lights on.
Yeah, it's the light.
Given that candy, if your light's not on.
Just put a big bucket of candy out there and says, take one, and we'll follow the rules.
Yeah, the 14-year-olds will come by and take the whole thing.
The year will pay.
All right, any questions for Jonathan on the town manager's report? He's very efficient at. Okay, let's go to department head reports. Anything from Jeff at the EMS, I, I see Jeff's online. Jeff, any report for you?
Um, the only big thing to report is billing. Over the last, oh, about three weeks here, I've gotten a better handle on the billing. And I've shared a little bit with Jonathan and Karen here, but I will share a little bit with you also. Now, this represents total runs, so it's not like it's a increase, but I'll break it down here a little bit for you. But I've been able to review 158 runs. And I started with August 1st and worked to the current date, which I reviewed 48 runs, 29 of them were actually calls that we could bill, and I've sent it on to billing. And 19 were calls, dry run in nature, whether it was just a alarm, or canceled en route, or arrived on scene and they did not want us, those are natures of the dry runs. And then in, in learning the system and learning some potential areas for concern, I also started going back from January 1 to July 31st. And I found 64 calls that were never reviewed, that were hidden within the system. No fault to the previous administrators or the interim administrators. It was a thing within the system that caused these to become hidden with a lot of filters. Some of the filters can be removed, but it's, if you don't know the entire system and how it works, it just can easily become hidden. Of those 64 calls, 47 of them resulted in dry runs. And 16 of them resulted in calls to be billed, so I've sent those on to billing. And also, one call, I'm still in process trying to get the billing information. And so then, and it's, as a, just, just for, just for curiosity, I went back into 1-19 through 12-31 of 19 and found an additional 46 calls that were hidden within the system. Eight are currently being, eight were currently billed, 23 I'm still processing, and 15 were dry runs. So right now, we have a potential of a $42,000 in additional revenue, with the possibility of also having another $20,000 of possible additional revenue. The only downside is, what I talked about back in budget hearings, is that there are some, some of these calls, as I get the information, that we will not be able to bill because they're either past the 365-day limit when it comes to Medicaid or Medicare and Medicaid. Medicaid is even half that, is 180. So trying to work through that system here, next month, I'll be bringing you some, some areas that I'd like to change and I'd like to share with you more in regards to report writing, software, and billing, looking at some different avenues for billing, cost-saving measures. So been working on that and working on a couple other things here. But that's been the main thing, is just getting a handle on the billing and getting everything up to date as much as possible.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you going deep on that and going back as far as you can. A little surprising, but I guess the upside is there's some potential revenue coming in.
Right, right.
Um, next we have the fire department. Hey, Ken.
Hey. Just a couple things, our new truck is scheduled to be in our station next Monday at 5:00 PM. It is 100% complete, signed off. And Karen's processed, in work of processing final payment. So pass on from the Call of Fire Department, huge thank you to everybody involved because we've got a five-person committee that's been running with this. Lot of money, large and small, come from everywhere. Certainly appreciate, this is not, not a small. So I'm going to ask the committee to have, shortly after, within a couple days, maybe have another house, I think that truck cab won't pull that out. We'll have to observe our distancing, but let anybody and everybody who wants to come down, take a look at it, and have food and drinks and whatever there. Sure like to have the comments there with pictures and all that. So we'll get that scheduled, and hopefully there shouldn't be any delays, it's, it's one of those.
Right.
Other than that, we're moving, starting to move forward with a, I think, we call it a firefighter cadet program. Dave brought this up and drafted up a draft copy, and I think he helped with the town attorney. Basically trying to get younger folks involved in our fire department. At age of 18 and over, we've got 16 prior to moving, we've been up 24, now we're down to 16. We're going to be down to 15 January 1. So we've got a few younger guys that are interested, so we can make sure we follow all the legalities, get them involved at the station when they come back, roll in a pose, plan a pose, how we do things. And maybe that'll promote them, interest for those that are going to stay with the community, to get involved. Because it is, it is really, I remember, I feel that old, but I remember actually screening people and almost turning them away. Now you're just on the other side of it. We need, we call it mutual aid more and more, so if we can do something like that and get some other people involved. I also heard that, I think all the new schools on the school board there, I've heard of a emergency responder program that may be coming to life shortly. Similar to the skill programs, you know, the skill version, you know. Juniors and seniors, you can, you can go learn how to, go learn how to work on cars, I think they got robotics anywhere. So I think they're coming up with a program for emergency response, which is awesome.
Yeah.
Their junior and senior year, they could possibly take their fire number one, fire private two test out. And be certified to get on a truck at 18 years old. So hopefully that, that goes through. We'll see if we got, I know we've got some interest now, obviously that's why we're pursuing it. But it'd be nice to get those, these newer folks that are going to live in this community and try to take some of the burden of getting qualified. I got qualified way back when, I showed Lance I could do this, he signed off, said get a truck.
A little different now, huh?
We are far, far from that now. And that's, that's a, that's a roadblock that helps to get. We used to go for the quality candidates and how it worked with the warm bodies. Because we've had several people show interest and then turn away. We had people show interest and join, it's not working out, too much time and training and too much commitment. Because it's a large commitment, so hopefully that'll help in the future, get a few more on our department. But as always, we've got, we've got the best equipment and the safest equipment, we appreciate. We appreciate that.
Thanks, Ken.
Ken, did you have the, did you want to go over that repair estimate you had sent?
Yes, I don't have the time.
I've got it.
Thirty-eight hundred.
We have, we had a couple of annual tests that we had to do with Jonathan, Baron Horse. Walt discovered, we've got a leak starting on our tanker in one of the pumps. So, just with a phone call, they're estimating to repair thirty-eight hundred dollars to tear into that pump. The truck's not out of service. We've got a couple of brass fires where we run engine two instead of that tanker, just to not use that pump. It's probably not serious, serious, but I think we can get taken care of. I don't want to give the situation when we're using that truck and that pump face. So, Walt had an estimate, required they were estimating to remove and replace the can of fuselage in their diagnosis at a cost of thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Motion to approve the repair?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Ken. Police department, Wayne.
I have a couple of things. The sheriff's department is switching over to their main, the mayor, if that's how it's called. On the CAD system.
Oh, yes.
It's the CAD system we all use. They have to change it and update it because it's, I guess, basically falling apart. They work with this central square organization. Part of that, which encompasses all of the law enforcement. But we've had this since, I know, two thousand, maybe, somewhere around there. It's not going to be free no more. Hate to say it, but our department actually came in the cheapest, if that's a consolation.
How'd that happen?
Maybe it was a wisdom. But what this system does is it, there's really two sides to it. We can have just a CAD, which is operational with the peers. But the RMS system, which is the other side of all this, which is access to all reports, all jail stuff, all everything. So, if a, say a person type report, we can type reports into this system. So, if something happens in Breeden, for example, and we run a person by name or information in there that pops up somewhere else or that we see that they had, it's an interchangeability of information and this type of thing. That's really kind of one of the big aspects of the RMS. Plus, it does other things, it's mapping. I mean, I don't know, even know all, everything it does. We have jail system. We arrest somebody, we, we'll be doing stuff on our, our computers and the car and stuff, and the person will be half booked into the system before he gets up there. There's a lot of advantage, but the big advantage is the report writing and stuff like this. Just the interchangeability of information among departments. So, if somebody got in trouble in Argus, we will be able to see that and know that instead of always guessing or calling or hearing this and we call and try to run that basket already know. About the best way I can explain it. But we dealt with this guy, we had a meeting. Unfortunately, it was after we were into budget stuff. That's the drawback with it. But the sheriff's department, I think, is one hundred and sixteen thousand, if that sounded about right. It's costing them for theirs. Our share is going to be twenty-seven hundred and eighty-seven, eighty-six. I mean, we don't have to do it, but they would be foolish not to. Then we'd be going once, not doing it.
And that would be an annual contract service?
Pardon me?
This would act, this would be an annual contract service?
Yes. It'll be an every-year service. It's good for five years, as far as that fee. But after five years, it will go up no more than five percent. If you want to read that part of the agreement in the last paragraph. So, the most of it, five years, but probably the most it will increase is five percent of that fee. But we, not only me, but other departments, we had a lot of questions with the guy and stuff. And in fact, we're having a meeting this Friday. That's why I don't know whether we have to sign the contract Friday to agree to this or when they want to invoice if we choose to do this or how. But I guess I'd like to go Friday with an approval, and that's what I have to do.
So, this would start in January, Wayne?
This will all.
Or be effective immediately?
They're transferring everything over the course of the next year.
Okay.
But when do we get billed exactly? I mean, I know until Friday. That's the part I don't know.
Okay. You just want a blasting on moving forward in the event that those details get worked out?
And we've worked out the details of paying it, whether it's this year yet or next year.
Point, will they, will they do all of the necessary training and education for to stay up on, on this new software and things like that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're going to manage, just a couple will manage everything, upgrade as needed. And sheriff department will take care of the maintenance of everything up there. Because this is where it's all going to be worked through, and that's the central area where it's all going to be at and all the information to be held.
I have a motion to approve authorizing Wayne to move forward with a potential expense in 2020 or 2021 for a contract service.
Will move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the other thing. Our radios. I'll probably explain this the best I can. We've had these AMF radios since probably before 2000. They're, they're end of life. And what that means, end of life, doesn't mean they're just automatically quit working, but what that pertains to is what? Yes, if a radio breaks, it can't be repaired. They don't have, if you, if you find a part, you're lucky. So, that's what's going to happen. A lot of them use them when they make good radios. It's not only just the cars, the, or the portals, but the car radios would be in the same position. So, I got a quote from ERS for radios that are comparable to the ones we carry. They're the, they're probably the most durable, most performing, and the best radio that's compatible to the same radio we carry. They have, have enhanced themselves. So, he gave me, I told him I really didn't want a ballpark number, I wanted to be in the dugout. So, he told me probably forty-three hundred dollars, but that encompasses body heights and all that stuff. Which is what we have for these radios also.
And you would need four of these?
Well, we need five. And what we'll do with these, the ones we have, we will use them as part-time readers if and when they, they go bad. But when, here's nothing else to do with, you know. So, it's not like we're just going to pitch, you know, we're still going to use them, but if radios start breaking, we're going to be in trouble, you know. I'd rather start playing now and start replacing. I can ask them to buy all my radios tonight or replace all the car radios tonight. I think we try and do this in time. So, that led me to a plan of what to do. I would like to purchase three radios. And with the cost of the CAD system, the cost is going to be in or around fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Right? So.
Approximately to the size of that, right? That's what we're like.
So, to kind of make it a better, in other words, it's not good, but yet also to make it a better system, you know, or to plan out of it. I would wait one year to get the car and help pay for this stuff.
Just skip the rotation?
Normally, we rotate out, it closes a little bit off, but I think it's doable.
What do we normally put toward a car, about twenty thousand?
Well, it's usually around twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, over two years.
But we encompass, we encumber money from this year to next year. Rather than encumber this money or have to encumber it, you're award. It's still the same amount of money we already currently have, which is twelve thousand, was it twelve thousand or twelve thousand five hundred?
I think it's this time.
So, we have twelve thousand already that can go toward this. So, we really only need roughly thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred dollars. I think they've been squeezing up before the end of the year to get that.
From another line item?
So.
Okay.
That's my hope. So, we're really not, and we buy three radios, pay for the CAD system to start out until we work that in. So, it's kind of a.
Okay.
I think a plus.
We can add a thousand in the back, it's thirteen.
What's that?
It's thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand?
Yeah, I just made it even better. Approximately.
Did you get more than one, Russ? Did you carry close to me?
No, we did these, we got all this stuff from ERS. That's where everything looks, it is multiple. That's kind of where we're.
It's easier, is that?
They actually have an office in Oak Park, I've been there.
I know that they haven't been that close.
Yeah.
So.
That part, I think, open model is the other.
You get the CAD and the three radios this year, skip one rotation on the vehicle, and then try to get the other two next year?
Well, about two, but we'll do one at least. And hopefully, one year is not going to gross up much.
Yeah.
But it'll help suffice the problem and help curb.
Sure.
I like doesn't take into account increase in financials and golf regulations, doesn't. I mean, that could affect a lot of guests, fine. Right, too good. I just wanted to make that part clear.
Nothing to do with that.
Yeah, but the increase, money from those lines could help me.
Oh, yeah.
So, Wayne's looking for authorization to go ahead and purchase three of the radios. We've already approved the CAD purchase. And in lieu of this purchase, he would skip a year on the car rotation. Karen says he's got thirteen thousand already allocated for the car purchase. We're just going to purchase this instead. And he'll squeeze out the remainder of that balance from some other line item in his budget.
Hopefully, you know, within the next year, I don't know, a lot of departments are talking about this, trying to find grant funding to help with some certain things, you know. So, hopefully, I know there's one I was looking at, they have to have it in by November. Ain't no way it's going to happen, you know. I don't even know if they would pay for it, you know. So, it might give us a chance to work on something, you know. And we may get the other stuff replaced and the lesser costs. But it's like I said, a jumpstart and we're, I think, on the right track.
I hope that we authorize replacing the three radios, the specifications Wayne mentioned this year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, Wayne. I think Amber already left and you covered the one part issue. Utilities, Bob, did you have anything else other than what, the BACO discussion?
Nope, that's all I had, and I thank you for letting me order that.
All right, thank you, Bob. I will move on to boards and commissions. Is anyone online or here for a plan commission report or VZI? I don't think we do have anyone for that. Redevelopment Commission?
A couple of things from last night's meeting. One of the COVID plans that the redevelopment commission participated in was fostering to develop Culver or Main Street, to work with some of the local merchants on developing their websites so that they can sell their products online. After that was done, redevelopment commission did a survey of those merchants to get feedback on, on how that process went. And so, those surveys are going to be shared with the developed Culver group, but also sending them to the council to see if they have some idea of what happened and how it went. And that we're eliciting a feedback group on projects like that. Secondly, and I think I may have mentioned it last time, but we formalized it last night, the redevelopment commission is suggesting a guideline for providing documentation for items to be on our agenda for consideration. So, we meet on the, typically on the third Monday of the month. The Thursday before that Monday, by five p.m., any items that need to be on the agenda should be provided to the redevelopment commission with the documentation associated with that. If it is a facade grant application, we ask that it actually be the Monday before the Monday meeting. And we'll be coming out with, with sort of the guidelines just to let people know and publicizing that information. But we think it'll make us better prepared, give us the documentation that we need, be better prepared for meetings as we go forward. And I think that's it. We already talked about the participation on the economic development plan.
Okay. Great, thank you. Anyone reporting on tree commission online or otherwise?
There aren't any members, I'll just say that they approved their list. I think it's thirteen or fourteen removals that are coming out in the next couple of weeks that are either requests or the trees are dead and decided to move forward with them and have another contract, so those should be coming up soon.
Right. Clerk's report?
I have four claims over fifteen hundred dollars for your removal. The first one is for the Publos, they did the sidewalk program for one thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Approximately. First response for one thousand, eight hundred dollars, and that was for the parking under contractual services. EJ Prescott, sixteen thousand, two fifty, sorry, for water, materials and supplies. And then our final payment on the fire truck was three, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. And that money came from the fire funds, the fire non-reverting fund, rainy day, and CRC.
Okay. Motion to approve claims?
Shall I move? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you for your patience and the field trips earlier with all of the details surrounding the budgets and the additional preparations. I will go over that and schedule a public hearing. Lots to do, a public hearing and then pass ordinance. The deadline on that, I believe, is December fifteenth, so I've got a little bit of time that I can get it done.
Okay.
Finally, the townwide reds sales are this weekend, and I'll have maps out Thursday morning. And just a reminder that we did one big fall, one big town cleanup this summer in July rather than Tuesday. There will not be a fall cleanup, so you're just going to have to hold up your stuff until May, providing, you know.
Thanks.
There's no other new pandemics or anything.
Let's hope all of my stuff sells. Thank you, Karen.
Jim, did we, did we do a, we approved the, we need to approve, we need to get our appropriation, the additional appropriations, because I don't think we did it.
Well, you can go ahead and approve moving forward with it if you, if you would like, that's fine. Otherwise, you'll, you'll officially approve it when it goes to the public hearing or whatever.
I didn't know what it was going to be up to.
It's, if you want to go ahead and make a motion to approve it, that's fine.
I'll make a motion. We approve the additional appropriations.
They're moving forward.
And moving forward on the additional appropriations.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. I'll let Karen catch up on the notes there, and we'll move to attorney's report.
I don't have much of a report. I'm still working on options and trying to, I guess, sort through the legal rules that are related to the sheriff's sale of the Fort Fifteen Lakeshore property. And, you know, I started down this road thinking one thing, and as you guys all have in different intentions and goals and mind, so things are changing and still changing. And I guess I'm hopeful that we can figure it all out and get to where we want to be. So that process keeps going, and we'll keep reporting and reviewing, and we've got plans for that coming up.
Great. Thank you, Jim. I don't think we have anyone here for a utility shut-off or maintenance violation, so we'll move to citizen input in the room first. Citizen input, yes, Gary?
Hey, I have a couple of pictures here, and both of them revolve around the radius of South on Main Street. One is the construction on Davis. And I think it's got to happen. It's going to be great when it's finished. But my concern is there is no flag man or flag person to help track the flow specifically on Main and around Davis Dog Lake. I've seen instances where, one was, was almost a serious accident, that they use a front-end loader to bring equipment and materials around to the dig site. And that thing is running around Prado and Episco and Nuevo Gordo like a golf cart. It's going around the back way to get to the dig where it can't go directly, and then it's coming back to pick up materials. And on one instance, coming out of Prado into, onto Main Street, it almost T-boned Jamie Trout in her Subaru. And she had to slam on the brakes and go into the other lane. Fortunately, there was nowhere to park coming. And the backhoe or the front-end loader slammed on the brakes, but they're not, they're looking at it as a work site, not as an operating traffic zone. Another instance, I saw a flatbed of materials from Ferguson backing up from Davis onto Main because they didn't need materials down at the construction site. They needed them over at, at Vanguard where they're staging. So there was nobody looking out for this tractor-trailer that was backing right out onto Main Street. And cars coming down Main Street from south going north aren't going to see this thing until they come around the corner. So I, I think it's ripe for an accident, the way it's being cavalierly handled, and having a flag person there to help traffic when they need it would really stave off an accident, I believe.
Can we maybe get Bob and Wayne on that? That does sound like a kind of, can we require them to do that?
I'd have to look at the way it was contracted out. I, there's usually a line in there for maintenance of traffic, but this, you know, the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program is primarily for resurfacing, and I don't think they require it or include funding for that in these projects. So I, I, I think there's an item in there, but I just cover signage usually. I would have to double check, and I don't know. Bob, could you hear any of the discussion there, the concern about the Main Street traffic? I think a lot of it, I, my concern would be, I would assume if it would be an actual stage there, that would be entirely out of our funds. It wouldn't be matched at all, and that's not what we budgeted for. But I'm wondering how much of it couldn't be addressed with just better safety concerns and maybe some signage or block observer necessary. Could you hear all that, Bob?
I did. I will talk to HRP, which is the subcontractor for E and B tomorrow, and see what we can do to enhance some of those concerns.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think if we have to fund something or get them to be less cavalier, because it doesn't bode well for them if they hit one of our citizens and it doesn't bode well for us.
That thing weighs over twenty thousand pounds.
Yeah, no one's going to survive that Subaru or any other vehicle, for that matter. And that's crazy that they're operating that way. That even seems like a, I mean, if you're not looking both ways to begin with, what the heck? So chew them up a little, Bob.
I'll talk to them tomorrow and see if we can do a better job of it.
Okay. And just let us know if we need to do something on this end that, to stop that happening.
I will do that.
Yeah. Was there something else, Gary, that you said?
Another thing, maybe with the tree commission, and maybe it's on the list, I don't know, but as you go south on Main, right by Culver Garden Apartments, there's several large trees on the right overhanging Main Street. And one of them is half-dead. It is a huge tree, probably three hundred years old. And they have tremendous limb size hanging over Main Street. And you can clearly see that it's dead. The leaves are brown versus the rest of the tree being green still. And it's not going to take much to, to fell a portion of that tree onto the road, just so that they know about it, and it'll become their list. But it looks like it's, I mean, if that comes down, a part of that comes down, it's going to, it's the size of the tree itself, the limb that's hanging over those. I just thought I'd fill that out.
Yeah. We'll have, Bob, while you're in that neck of the woods, can you check out the tree and see if it's on the tree commission list? And if not, maybe that's one we do out of our line item budget for trees.
I will do that. What was the location? I couldn't hear that.
It's heading south on, on Main, right before you get to the Culver Garden Apartments on the right side, on the west side, by, by Garden Court.
Right before you get to the garden apartments, Bob, on South Main Street.
I will look into that.
Thank you, Bob.
You betcha.
Thank you, Gary. Any other citizen input in, in the room? Anyone on the phone for citizen input? Okay. Council issues? Rich, any council issues?
Just, I just have a question about something Gary raised at the beginning of our last meeting or meeting before, in terms of NIPSCO safety. When NIPSCO was capping those lines down there, there's a question about, you know, they couldn't find their main shut-off in a while. I don't count it, and I think you were going to contact NIPSCO with response?
Yeah, I did get a response in writing, but I'd have to find that email. I can forward it to the group tomorrow, if that works.
Be sure with your email.
Sure, sure. I don't know. Do I have your email, Karen?
Oh, oh, fine. Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Bill Clevinger, council issues?
Nothing, thank you.
Bill Giffins, council issues? Sally, council issues? Just wanted to remind council, I believe tomorrow night is the executive session. Did we land on five or 5:30?
We had already put our notice out.
Five o'clock for the advertisement? Okay. I just want to make sure we get that straight. So five o'clock executive session. And I still am going to work with Jonathan on a date for us to do the ethics onboarding training meeting, get that scheduled, probably looking at late October, early November. But we'll get back to you guys on that, too. So, and in the meantime, we will try to figure out the rest of that economic development contract and communicate, keep guys in loop on that. And otherwise, anything else from you three that you forgot or thought about? Okay, we'll take a motion to adjourn the claims.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I'll see you tomorrow night. Are some of you coming in person to someplace?